Is you, Jack?
You didn't have to comment.
It's about time. After what, a year and a half, you finally got this figured out?
What's that?
After a year or so, you finally got it figured out?
Yeah, I've lost my way coming up here.
I understand.
It's a great issue, I think, with me.
Yeah. Good evening, and welcome to the May 19, 2014, meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Could I ask the clerk to call the roll, please?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Schoenheider.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Beidler.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Pandeleon is absent. Alderman Tac.
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Alderman Edelman is here and will be joining us. And Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Betty, very much. The council now going to adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel matters, the consideration for sale or lease of property, as well as reviewing executive session minutes. I need a motion to adjourn into executive session, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, roll call vote.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon is absent, I'm sorry. Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Six yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Okay, we will adjourn into executive session. Robert D. Stewart Jr., who passed away just recently, and I'd like to read this if I may. Whereas on behalf of the city of Lake Forest, the city council expresses its sadness at the profound loss of Robert D. Stewart Jr. on May 8, 2014. And whereas the Stewart family is one of Lake Forest's founding families, helping to create the community character, establishing philosophies of excellence to pass on to the city's future generations. And whereas Bob Stewart was a longtime and valued resident of Lake Forest, a well-respected and beloved family man, philanthropist, and community role model. And whereas Bob Stewart spearheaded and helped support many Lake Forest institutions and traditions, including Lake Forest College, the First Presbyterian Church of Lake Forest, Gorton Community Center, Lake Forest Open Lands Association, American Legion Post 264, Croya, Dickinson Hall, Lake Forest Lake Bluff Historical Society, Conway Farms Golf Club. And whereas Bob Stewart was a leader in the Chicago business community, most notably as chief executive officer of the family business Quaker Oats. And whereas Bob Stewart served as President Reagan's ambassador to Norway from 1984 to 1989. And whereas Bob Stewart, a beloved husband to the late Barbara Edward Stewart and beloved husband to Lillian, brother of Margaret Hart, loving father of James Stewart, Alexander Stewart, and Marion Pillsbury, adoring grandfather and great-grandfather. And whereas Bob Stewart was a kind and gracious man who deeply loved his family, community, and fellow residents. His contributions to Lake Forest were significant, and he will truly be missed. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council that its deepest sympathy goes out to the family. May I have a motion to approve the resolution, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And again, sympathy goes out to the Stewart family. Next item on the agenda, proclamation in support of Lake Forest Day on August 6, 2014. And I have another proclamation to read, if I can find it. Betty, I may be proclamationless. I am proclamationless. Oh, thanks. Got it. Whereas the McLeanlock Post 264 of the American Legion has undertaken to provide appropriate exercises and entertainment in celebration of Lake Forest Day on Wednesday, August 6, 2014, with a view to bringing together the people of our city in the furtherance of civic interest and achievement of community fellowship. And whereas the McLeanlock Post 264 of the American Legion honors Lake Forest residents, employees, neighbors, and friends by adopting the theme "Lake Forest American Legion Salutes Local Businesses." Therefore, be it resolved and proclaimed that said Lake Forest Day celebration is declared to be a city fair, and in pursuance thereof, in Tuesday, August 5, 2014, and Wednesday, August 6, 2014, shall be observed as a holiday in the city of Lake Forest, and our people are urged to forsake their ordinary pursuits and gather in West Park in spirit of comradeship and goodwill in support of the ideals of our city. That's great. You can count on me being there. Do you want to -- is -- We do need a motion to approve the proclamation.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? We'll go in -- Tom, do you want to step up?
Mr. Mayor and the council, Tom Marks, commander of the Legion Post here. Alexander McKinlock has a relatively hard-to-pronounce name, and people have been dealing with that for a long time. I invite all the people of Lake Forest to join us. It is our major fundraiser. It is the largest activity that goes on in this town every year. It's our honor to provide and work hard to make this thing happen every year. Pat Blake is with me this evening. He is the chairman of Lake Forest Day. We don't tally the number of hours that are spent, but we know that it's quite a substantial number. So it's an honor and a privilege to do this for the city. We enjoy it. We look forward to a beautiful day and no rain, and so we hope everybody will be there. We've gotten a little wet the last couple of years, but we're getting ready. We will be ready, both with the parade and with the carnival and all the things that we do. So, again, we thank you. If I just may add one editorial comment, I got the blowtaps for Bob Stewart on Saturday. It was a moving experience. He was, in fact, a very, very much of a great Lake Forest person, and we will all miss him. So, I was glad to be there. It was my honor.
Thank you, Tom.
We have some webpage people here. I am Mr. Low-Tech, so I would -- I think I'd call on Sean Fleming, maybe, to be the young man who's done the work and who would be much better able to answer any questions. We're looking at 10 thumbs here, so I would invite him to come forward. He's working on an Eagle Scout project, and we have another young man here also working on an Eagle Scout project. Lake Forest turns out a great many Eagle Scouts in our two scout troops, and these are fine young men, so please give them a hearing.
Okay, so, this page is to get people to, you know, to decide to come and find out about Lake Forest Day, as well as the sponsors and, you know, everything about Lake Forest Days. And we post fun facts and different stuff, pictures. You know, we interview people, sponsors, and we post that, like, I think, every week, videos, and stuff like that, so, yeah.
Any questions? Bob?
No questions. I don't know -- actually, I might ask Tom to come up. Tom, I know the community knows all about the hard work that the Legion does with respect to Lake Forest Day, but why don't you take just a couple of minutes? And I think the Eagle Scouts program that you have is another fine example, but you do an awful lot for this community that most people don't understand.
Well, thank you, Bob. The fundraising that we do provides services in a number of different areas. We support True 48. We support two Cub Scout packs. We sponsor eight or nine young men to go to boys' state every year. We send a number of people to girls' state as well. We support Applause. We support Croya. And Awards Night for the seniors in high school is coming on the 28th of May. And we provide four scholarships, usually totaling between $12,000 and $14,000 a year. And I think that makes us probably the biggest check writer of anybody on senior night. I know that there are many fine organizations that support our young men and women that are going off to college, and we're all reading about how expensive college is getting, but I think the American Legion probably writes the big check. In addition to that, we support our veterans and our active-duty personnel. Two or three times a year, we're up at Great Lakes, and we do something called No Dough Dinner. The young men and women who are going through A schools up there are not long on cash, and they get to payday, and they don't really have any money, and they've been eating the mess hall food for 29 straight days. And so, we're up there feeding them, somewhere between 300 and 500 young men and women, a dinner at the USO. We also support the USO, and there's a lot of other things that come up and a lot of other things that we support. And I think a lot of people, as you say, Bob, are not fully aware that that's what's going on, but we've got 200-plus members of the Legion in Lake Forest, and like any organization, there's members and then there's worker bees. And so, there's a dedicated bunch of worker bees, and we're glad to be able to raise the funds, and we're glad to be able to support things. I wish everybody could be up at Great Lakes and see the young men and women who are taking their place in military service because they're really quite exceptional. And for those of us who've done it and understand what that means, it's particularly fulfilling. And then last, I guess, is burial duty and cemetery things. We are there for our members and fire the rifles and blowtaps. And then, there's the putting up the flags around town. Eight times a year, the flags are going up. You're going to hear from a scout who's got a job this year to get his Eagle badge, which involves repairing and replacing poles and flags. And so, we'll be in the cemeteries on Friday, Saturday, and then Tuesday, as well as being at Square at 11 o'clock on Monday for Memorial Day. So, thanks for the prompt.
Thank you.
Great. Tom, thank you for all that the Legion does, not just for Lake Forest Day, but all you do around their community throughout the year. And I promise next year I'll continue to work on my McLeanlock presentation. I don't know what it is. It's just tough.
But if you've got a chance to read the five lieutenants, if you don't know the story completely, it's quite a story, and quite a story of his mother. So, if you haven't read about Alexander and World War I, it's worth a read. Quite a guy.
I'll be brushed up by Lake Forest Day, I promise. Next item on the agenda, discussion on city council meeting schedule. Is there an item there? Bob?
At the last city council meeting, I think it was Alderman Moore brought up the question about the committee, the whole meeting, the finance committee. So, we wanted to bring this back to you to talk about, really, what was the structure that the city council was most comfortable with? Because we can modify and reclassify any of these meetings any way that you would like. We just have to make sure we publicize them after you have made a decision. As I think I mentioned when this question first came up, is that this is really an outgrowth of, we used to have a lot of subcommittees, and then it came back to everybody wanting to be on the committee, the whole of the finance committee, and so, they almost, all the business got conducted there at that time. Sometimes, we don't have matters to discuss, so we can cancel the meeting, but it really is up to the pleasure of the council as to how you want to conduct your business, whether you like to have these or want to get rid of them. It's purely up to you.
Any thoughts on that?
Wait, is this the committee of the whole we're talking about?
Talking about committee of the whole?
We have the finance committee.
Right.
Yeah.
I just had an issue with the fact that we were filling time sometimes and waiting for the clock to run out for a meeting to start, which didn't make sense. And sometimes, our meetings go very, very late, which, if we're here at 6:30, we might as well start a meeting, was my thought, but that's just one person.
I have a -- Mandy, are you going to go?
No.
To me, after a year, I've never really understood the purpose of the meeting of the whole. Clearly, the finance committee, you focus right on finance. And, you know, Elizabeth gets up, and she makes her presentation, or George does something, and blah, 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 blah. But the committee of the whole, to me, has always been kind of like stuff that should be rolled into a regular city council meeting, and--
In fact, some of the things we cover, people came at 7:30 to hear, and we covered them because we had more time. That only happened twice, to my knowledge.
Yeah, and then, quite frankly, you know, we'd finish up the committee of the whole meeting in 15 minutes, and then, you know, people would feel that they had the obligation to keep the thing going until, you know, until the regular city council meeting started, which, I mean, I would just, I have a preference to just rolling the committee, eliminating the committee of the whole, and just having a city council meeting, either rolling it into the city council meeting or starting the city council meeting a little bit earlier.
What was the original purpose, an idea behind the committee of the whole? Was it to vet certain issues before the council meeting?
It was. It was to, it was almost, think of it as a workshop meeting, where the council could talk about a subject that may not be on the agenda that evening, but might be on an agenda two weeks or a month later, so that there could just be some general discussion and some direction given to staff about a particular topic. Or, the other is really to publicize and educate a topic to the community, because the committee of the whole is televised, just like a council meeting, and so, there may be a topic that you don't necessarily need to act on, but you wanted to get the word out there as to what's going on.
But why can't that be done at a city council meeting?
It certainly can. I would say that, and I think this goes to Alderman Reisenberg's question, I think, is, historically, the council meetings always start at 7:30, but there's nothing that says it can't start at 7:00 or 6:30, if you wanted to do that as well. So, you could certainly do that, and if you will, merge then the two meetings together.
I certainly understand the benefit of sometimes discussing something in a workshop-type setting before formal action is taken, but we do that at city council meetings all the time. We have items that are up for discussion only, so we don't necessarily need to have, my thought is, a separate meeting to do that. I understand that, you know, if we do then start at the same time, that there might be a greater probability of our meetings, some of our meetings, running rather late. So, perhaps, we should discuss an earlier start time.
Any other thoughts on that?
I mean, we should have one meeting and start at 7:00.
I'm all for rolling it into one, for the continuity, because we don't have to, well, for the sake of killing time. And we can have as much deliberation as we need up here. Unless we're slighting anybody in the community by moving the start time of city council up to 6:30, and it's traditionally been at 7:30, I'd be in favor of just getting it rolling at 6:30.
The question becomes, and Bob, what about finance committee? So, you know, the question is, do we want to keep a consistent time? You know, in the past, we've had either committee of the whole or finance committee at 6:30, council at 7:30. You know, do we move council to 7? If we have a finance committee, we start at 6. I think I'm, I just, I think my only concern is just the community having some kind of continuity about when the meetings start.
I would start, have every meeting start at 6:30. And then, the first week, it's just a regular city council meeting, and what used to be discussed at the committee of the whole is just, is just put as part of our regular agenda. And then, the next week, the second week, we do finance.
Or put finance on the agenda.
It's finances on the agenda, and it's the first thing we discuss at 6:30. And you, finance is normally, what, a half hour anyhow? We have it on the, if it's a half hour, we have it on the agenda for, during that second week, when we'd always have it, and it's the first thing on the agenda.
Or the second, it really--
Or the agenda, yeah, right. But I think you're right. There needs to be a consistent starting time. You can't have people thinking that, gee, I want to make sure I, you know, I'm at that meeting because there's something, you know, there's a big issue, and all of a sudden, they show up, and they miss their turn of pack. We certainly know with that.
Question for you. Has the, is there a time that serves the community better between 6:30 and, I don't personally care, but is, are people still coming home from work that want to come to meetings at 7:00, or, I mean, 7:30, if we cram it all in, could mean late meetings and late dinners for maybe no effect, but--
Well, I mean, the plan commission meetings always start at 6:30. Most of the commission meetings start at 6:30.
Yeah. And I think that if you want to talk about traditions, city council used to meet Saturday mornings, and got away from that tradition, and so, I think the community will adjust.
Actually, I wasn't asking you. I was asking, no, I was kidding.
Yeah. I think the community will adjust. You know, there's some that meet during the day, certainly the county board and so forth, but I think, as the city attorney said, is that we could post everything to start at 6:30 or immediately following the conclusion of. And so, for a finance committee, whether it meets for 15 minutes, a half hour, or an hour, that the finance committee would meet first, and then you would start up as soon as it's over. Keep in mind, we're broadcasting and televising these, so, you know, we'll just run right into the next meeting, and then the meeting gets over when it gets over.
Also, when there's a hot topic, we can just place it in a slot on the agenda so that it's a little bit later to give people who might be interested in it to get home, commuting from downtown or whatever. Because it seems when there's a hot topic, the people manage to come out.
Is there a need to, if we decide to switch the time, which I'm in favor of eliminating committee of the whole, is there a need to really publicize this and sort of get the word out? Because traditionally, city council, I don't know about traditionally, but at least in recent memory, city council started at 7:30.
Yeah, no, we would definitely do that. I will say that a lot of people do visit the website to check up on the time, because they also can get the agenda online as well, and so, we'll just make sure for a period of time that we highlight exactly when the meetings are going to start. And we would start regular city council meeting unless there's a finance committee, because there are going to be a couple of months that, quite candidly, we don't have any finance committee work, and so, we would just go directly into the city council during those months as well.
Sound like a plan?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, we will have to bring this back to you with the new times, so we'll put this on your next agenda for ratification.
Somebody should call Mr. Pasquazie.
Yeah, all right, let him know. He might like the earlier start time.
All right, next item on the agenda, resolution reinstating the Lawrence Our Temple Distinguished Public Service Award Committee. And recently, it was brought to my attention that, for a long time, we had a distinguished community service award named after Lawrence Temple. And for the last several years, that award has been somewhat dormant and not active. And one of the things I've certainly become acutely aware of since I've become mayor is the number of people who contribute so much of their time in their talent star community. And I think it's only appropriate for us to reinstate that award and begin the process of identifying and publicly recognizing volunteers in the community who do so much, very often without much recognition. And so, I would tonight like to ask the council if they would approve an action to direct staff to create a resolution for the council to approve reinstating the Lawrence Our Temple Distinguished Public Service Award Committee.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Direct accordingly. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, resolution of appreciation of retiring members of boards and commissions. I will quickly read those. These are all, have served on the Croya Youth Executive Committee for 2013, 2014. Jack Williams was the chair, vice-chair Kate Wally. CSL Chair Martha Stride. CSL Vice Chairs Leah Henry and Kelly Jacobs. Parliamentarians Mark DiValerio and Emily Ruhl. Fundraising Chairs Isabel Block, Abby Bowman, and Matt Shea. Topic Night Chairs James Flannery and Liam Gator. Public Relations Chairs Sophie Morasco, Gianna Santello, and Yakai Yamucci. I'm having a really struggle with names tonight. Cable Tech Chairs Joey Franklin and Spencer Welt. Croya Foundation Chair Annie Kotars. And Croya Woodlands Liaison Margaret Anderson. Croya Lake Forest Academy Liaison Tommy Chandler. And Music Liaisons Jamie Flint and Graham Ulmer. Could I ask the council to approve the resolution of appreciation for those individuals? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, unanimously approved, and I'd like to, again, thank those great young people for all of their time and energy on behalf of the community. That completes my report, and I'll move on to next item on the agenda, comments by City Manager Bob Kiley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We've already handled item A, so let me move into item B, which is a request by Market House on the Square for a special event permit that would allow it to close South Gate two times a year for purposes of holding outdoor events. I think the council is aware that this practice, we, I don't want to call it a pilot, but we ran it a couple of times in 2013 to see how it would work, whether it was intrusive in the community with the neighboring businesses and Market Square and so forth. And I think both police and city staff are the feeling that they were well-received. Events in the community did not have any problems in terms of being able to fence off the area, because there is both music played, as well as alcohol served in this area, but it does bring a certain vibrancy to the downtown area when these events are being held. The one request, and the reason it is coming before you this evening, is for, I think, planning purposes, for both the owner, as well as the city, to be able to look within the course of the year and say, okay, here are the dates that we're looking at, so we can plan for it, because, you know, he needs to book his acts and some of the other issues as well. So, in your packet this evening is a request to issue a special event permit to allow Market House on the Square to host two events on South Gate between Bank Lane and Forest Avenue. The events will be held on June 8, and a September date to be determined. And then, at the end of this year, we will evaluate again, how did it go? If we didn't have any problems, then the owner will be permitted to come back and, again, ask for similar type of arrangement in 2015. The owner, Mark Wescott, is here. If you have any specific questions, otherwise, the staff would recommend approval of the special event permit.
Any specific questions for Bob or for Mark?
I think it's a great idea.
Sounds like fun.
Mark, while you're there, do you want a plug for the band that's playing on June 8?
I'm excited about this one. We work with the School of Rockin' Hiwood, which is owned by Rob Rowe, who's a Lake Forest resident, and the June 8 event will be a number of the kids' bands. That's how they started their whole program, was putting bands together for kids to learn how to play. And then, they figured out the adults wanted to play too, so they put together an adult band as well. So, there'll be at least three and maybe four bands all performing Sunday with the kids, who are actually better than the adults anyway, starting off the show and the adult band closing it. So, it'll be on a Sunday. Most of the retailers are closed, and it should be a good reason to be in downtown Lake Forest. We're looking forward to it.
Great. Anyone from the public care to comment on this matter? If not, I'm sorry.
Maybe, while he's making plugs, do you want to talk about where you're at with all the other renovations going on at Market House?
The only big project that we'd like to do is redo the patio. Unfortunately, the weather didn't really help, it didn't help us in lots of ways this year, and certainly, one of the things was the ability to do much construction. So, the goal is in the fourth quarter to start construction, and next year, have a kind of cleaned-up patio that I think would match Market Square. The bricks will be similar, and I think it'll just kind of add to the character and bring the character that's inside the square out to the restaurant, and just kind of, just kind of round out that whole area. So, we're looking forward to that.
I think Alderman Waldeck also pointed-- I think it's, Alderman Waldeck also pointed out, we both have seniors, so that's graduation weekend, the seventh is graduation, so that might change the dynamic of what you've got planned, you might have more kids there than you thought, unless you have it before six o'clock at night.
Actually, we'll, we'll have one band probably finishing up around 7:30 or something like that, but I think, I think it'll all work out, the nice thing is we have a really nice parking lot, and I appreciate you guys taking such good care of it for us, and that's always the biggest concern, I think, is just parking, so that should be fine.
Maybe a nice place to stop off after a family graduation party.
That'd be great, that's a great idea. Reservations early, please.
Okay, with no other comments, I would like to get a motion to approve the special event permit to Market House on the Square, M.H. Fish House, to host two events during fiscal year 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Seven yay, zero nay, motion carries.
Great, congratulations, Mark, best of luck.
Thanks very much, I really appreciate your time.
We'll keep our fingers crossed for good weather, too.
Always good weather.
That's right. The final item I have, which is on the actual published agenda, is I wanted to bring to your attention in the write-up of this packet, we highlighted in yellow a new section that the staff has added called project review and recommendations, and part of the reason we did that was some comments that had, we've heard from some of the aldermen about what other processes have taken place prior to this coming before you. Some of them might have to do with other boards and commissions, some of them might be things like the Stormwater Management Commission, or in this case, it's here District 67, so what we wanted to do is to make sure that there was a clear articulation of some of those other reviews that have taken place, so you can get a sense as to, you're not seeing it for the first time, or, well, you're seeing it for the first time, but it's not being seen for the first time by the community, but I would say that we've highlighted this because if there's any other data information that you would find helpful in your review and analysis, please let us know, because this was our first crack at it, but if you would like it changed up, modified, just let me know, and we will try and tweak it going forward.
Okay. Great, thanks, Bob.
That completes my report.
Next item on the agenda, comments by council members.
If I could just take two minutes real briefly.
Go ahead, Mike.
This wasn't on the agenda, for the last eight, nine months or so, I've been serving on a joint task force of Lake Bluff, Lake Forest, Parks and Rec, looking at potential synergies and whatnot. A formal written report will be presented to the two communities in June, I believe, we reviewed a draft of it this morning, but I wanted to touch briefly on one subject that has a more immediate need to bring to your attention. The task force divided into four groups, programming, I can't remember number two, the beach, and then the golf courses, and I served on the golf course subcommittee, and on the desk in front of you is a one-pager, double-sided, it's addressed to Bob Kiley, it was an email I sent to Bob and the mayor, and Karina, Susan Banks, and Mary Van Arsdale at Parks and Rec. It had to do with some short-term ideas we had for the golf course, and I won't read this to you, I would ask that you take it home and read it, and I'm not asking for any formal decision-making on it now, but because, even though it snowed six days ago, winter's about to exit, and golf's about to spring into full gear, there are some short-term recommendations to enhance revenues potentially between the two golf courses, and there were basically two fronts we were addressing, retainage of Lake Bluff and Lake Forest golfers between our two golf courses, there are days when an outing at either one of the course, courses would jam it up, and so home golfers will go elsewhere to golf. Well, if, let's say they've aerated the greens at Lake Forest, and the guys don't want to play because the greens are freshly aerated, we'd like them to go to Lake Bluff instead of the sunset in Highland Park, or Libertyville, or somewhere else, so that's retainage of Lake Bluff, Lake Forest residents, so we're proposing like a 10-card punch pass that works at either one of the two golf courses, to, to keep the guys from going outside our two communities, and then, so that's retainage, then we're talking about fishing for new golfers, for new sources of revenue outside either one of our two, two communities, and kind of joining forces, offering a two-golf course menu, so that people in Highland Park, who may be losing a golf course shortly, or other communities, can buy a, a 10 punch card pass, or some sort of a discounted pass to come play either one of Lake Bluff or Lake Forest golf courses, and that way we're attracting new residents from outside of either of the two communities, and potentially enhancing revenues. Golf, from another article that's been placed on the desk, is that the trend is still severely downward, golf courses are closing because of diminished number of rounds and so forth, and there have been more golf courses closing than new golf courses coming on stream, that's a longer article, but I would ask that you read this, because this may come up for consideration at the next council meeting, or two from now, to get your blessings for a, a new fee structure for the golf course with respect to these punch cards.
Mike?
Yes.
Does the golf advisory committee still exist?
It does, it does.
Is that, is, would it be appropriate to discuss any of these ideas with the?
They've been, they've been copied with, as, as long as you're segueing into that, one of the recommendations of this task force is potentially to set up a joint community golf advisory board, for, to look at both of the golf courses, and maybe even bring in a third-party consultant for both of the golf courses, because this task force wasn't just to focus on the golf course, it was focusing on all the Parks and Rec activities, and being that golf is a very special kind of asset, we felt maybe some professional consulting would see things that we didn't see as laypeople, but our golf advisory committee was brought into the loop on that, too.
You have any questions for Mike?
So I just asked, take it home, read it, because it might come up.
One quick question, how many golf courses are in Lake Bluff or Lake Forest or tangential to it? It's a, we have a lot, right? I mean, there's like a, like 10 or something?
I can't answer the question, I'd have to refer to a written report.
Just Lake Forest, Lake Bluff?
Yeah.
Six?
You mean municipal or privately?
Well, most of them are private.
Yeah.
There's a lot of golf courses, aren't there?
Well, country clubs, yes.
Okay, any other items for discussion?
Oh, yeah, yeah, this is, this is, yes, exactly, this is my issue, so there's an item, number five on the omnibus, that we'll be discussing in a little bit, that relates to the authorization of a $500 impound fee related to DUI arrests, and it was my desire to have that pulled out, because I'd like to have some conversation about it, and in part because I don't really understand the necessity of it. First off, it's proposed in the explanation of this authorization that the reason for doing it is that it would be a deterrent, and yet I have yet to find any evidence that after the fact, fees like this are a deterrent to anything. It's my opinion that current DUI laws are rather punitive, they involve significant legal expenses, court costs, social embarrassment, and I think that's, that's plenty, and adding a $500 fee on top of it after the fact seems to me to be unnecessary. One of the arguments for this is that it will compensate us for the cost of doing this, while I thought that that was what we actually pay our police department to do, is to enforce these things, so I'm not sure that accumulating an extra $23,000 a year is really necessary, and I just personally think this is an unnecessary ordinance, and I'd like to have some discussion about it.
So would it be appropriate, Bob, to pull this off the omnibus and put it on a future agenda?
Either that, or you can put it on later on, you've got tonight's agenda, if you prefer, up to you.
Okay, either one. You want to discuss it later tonight?
I mean, I see no reason, my suggestion would be that we discuss it later tonight unless there's a reason not to, I mean, the legal committee has met and, and endorsed this idea, we discussed it at length, I know that Chief Held has been in front of us on prior occasions talking about it, I just, I, I see no reason to delay unless others, others want to delay.
We do have an area under ordinances, we can move it to that section, and we can discuss it at that point, has that? Okay. All right, any other comments by council members?
Yes, Mayor Sean Hunter, I would like to, and I think this is the right place to do it, Kathy is advising me that it is, in the omnibus section, we are going to be looking at a new recommendation by Parks and Rec for the memorial tree and bench policy, and I just want to say how excited I am to see this in writing, I think it's been considered for a long time, it looked very thorough to me, I've had some experience lately with, with donations to parks, and I, this feels to me like a really strong direction for the city to be going, and I commend Parks and Rec for, for coming up with something, this stuff is, it, it's complicated, and to figure it out and get it right, we may have to tweak it a little bit later on, but to have people, we want to encourage the spirit of giving in this community, which is already strong, but we need people to give things to the parks that make sense, and to operate on a plan, I think, is, is incredibly wise, and I really lodge you, and I hope we're enthusiastic about it.
Any comments by the council? All right, on to the next agenda item, opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items, is there anyone here that would like to address the council on a non-agenda item? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the next item, omnibus vote consideration, given that we've removed the fifth item, I have four, and I'll read those, again, if anyone likes to, would like to take those separately, we can do so, otherwise I'll ask for a motion to approve at the end. Item number one, approval of the May 5th, 2014 first and second session city council meeting minutes. Item number two, approval only for the April 21, 2014 city council executive session. Item number three, approval of a recommendation from the park and recreation board to adopt the memorial tree and bench policy, and item number four, award of a contract for resurfacing the Deer Path walking path, Deer Path Park walking path, as included in the FY15 capital plan. Unless anyone wants to take any of those individually for discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve the omnibus.
So moved.
Got a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Seven yay, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is ordinances, and we will revisit the consideration of an ordinance approving a fee for the impoundment of vehicles used in the commission of a DUI-related offense within the city of Lake Forest. Any further discussion? Maybe Chief Held, would you mind coming up and being here in case there are questions or further points of discussion?
I, I just have one comment on it, and there's, I, I'm just not too sympathetic to DUI incidences, so I'm not offended by the extra $500, it's the minimus compared to all the other expense that Alderman Tac outlined that a potential defendant has in a situation like that, but, you know, when you look at the pros and cons of driving under the influence, I just can't be too sympathetic.
And I, you know, I, I agree with that, and we, we discussed that at, at the legal committee as well, first of all, you know, in, in terms of the money that is gathered from this impound fee, it would be going directly towards the equipment and the necessary items that it takes to, to enforce DUI, so there is some logical connection between the fee and, and, and what it goes to, but bottom line is, I, I agree with Mike, I, I think that, you know, this is a crime that differs from many other crimes, it's often a misdemeanor, but it's unlike a theft, or a burglary, or any other type of traffic offense because of the numerous times that an accident causing injury or death is involved, and to whatever degree it does serve as a deterrent, however small, I, I think that's, that's well, well spent.
I, I'd like to say, I guess, there are two things, is first, I'd be curious to know if anybody thinks that this is a deterrent. I personally don't, it's, I mean, if I'm sitting in a bar, and I've had three drinks in two hours, or two drinks in two hours, is this going to, you know, make me think about, gee, should I have that third drink in the next 15 minutes knowing I'm going to go home? So I just was curious about that, and then, and then I'm just curious, you know, I, I will admit, having talked about it at the last meeting, I didn't thoroughly go through this ordinance, I just kind of thought it was, you know, it's, we talked about it, blah, 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 blah. I would like to know, just from you, Jim, what is the, what is the purpose? I mean, I, I came away from the last meeting thinking that this was just another, this was just a way to cover some extra costs that the city incurs as a result of this, and not that it was a deterrent, but so I'm just.
Why, why couldn't it be both? And, and I don't.
Well, it could, it could be, I just wondered whether, what everybody thinks, whether this is a deterrent.
I don't know whether any punishment is truly a deterrent, I don't know whether punishment that, you know, we, we give out ever truly deters anyone from committing a crime, I guess it depends on the person, but if it deters one person from getting in the car and driving drunk, then I'm, I'm good with that.
My view is that it is not a deterrent the first time, but it might be deterrent, a deterrent in the future, and I think that it's an economic deterrent, so someone who knows that they have issues with managing their consumption of alcohol to stay within the legal maximum, I think that they figure it out maybe the second time, and if not the second time, maybe the third time, and if not the third time, hopefully at some point.
They're in prison by then, I hope.
I hope so.
I don't think it's a deterrent the first time.
And if I could add, I don't care if it's a deterrent, if it's not a deterrent, if it's punitive, if it's not, and I almost feel we should do the same thing to people driving and texting at the same time, because that's just as lethal, potentially.
Any further comments or any other questions of Jim? Jim, did you want to address that?
Poor chief standing up there, his feet are starting to hurt.
I'd rather not talk. Alderman Reisenberg, I would probably tend to agree, it is, if it is a deterrent, it's a very small deterrent, and Alderman Moreno, I think she hit it on the head, it's probably more of a deterrent for the second offender, third offender, if it is at all. I, there is no data or studies to show that it is or isn't, because it, it hasn't been around all that long, so I don't think anybody really, nobody's really asking that question of an offender or something like that, if that, you know, hey, next time, do you think this might keep you from doing it, that's just not asked, and yes, hopefully, the money that comes from this, it'll buy equipment, it'll pay for training for, for our DUI, we have to re-certify on a regular basis, and it does become very costly, and it is probably one of the longer arrest processes that we go through, and it could take two officers or maybe more off the street, which now means they can't respond to other situations, so it is one of the more complicated arrests that we encounter.
And we do have a stretch of highway, Route 41, running through our community, where we've seen more than one fatality.
Many.
In our city, on that road alone.
You can, Jim, what was, what was the genesis of the ordinance? I mean, was, did this, is this something you've seen before, and you're very comfortable with it, I mean, did this, did this come from the, did it come out of the police department?
Yes, it did, we saw the other departments doing it, and talked to the other chiefs in their departments, and hate to use the word success, but the fact that they were able to recoup some of their costs, buy additional equipment, pay for additional training for their people out of this money, I think we saw that as a very big advantage to us.
I also think there's a hugely important, I don't know, you could call it symbolic value, and I have to say that I speak as someone who has a family member who was killed by a drunk driver, so I take this incredibly seriously. I think this gives a message that this is a community that does take this crime seriously, and it is a crime, it is potentially, you know, generally, it can happen that somebody kills somebody the first time they, they drive drunk, but that's not usual, it's usually someone who's done it a number of times before they finally take, take out a, a person or more, and so it feels to me this is not a bad message for us to be giving, we take it seriously, we're going to add a little bit of a financial burden on top of the other stuff, because it takes us extra time, but it says, we, you know, I mean, maybe it'll make people drive a different route home, and you know what? I'm okay with that, if this is, you know, it may not be a deterrent for drunk driving, but it may be a deterrent for drunk driving in our community, so I don't, I, you know, I don't know if, exactly. So I don't, you know, I don't know exactly what all it will do, but I frankly don't see that it does a lot of harm. But I could be missing, you know, a piece of that, that I'm just, because I'm, I'm so emotionally engaged with this particular issue.
Okay, so you can imagine how, how much fun it is to be the, the person sort of opposed to this situation. And it just, philosophically, the problem that I have with this is, it seems to me that this is exactly what you just said. You got together with police departments and said, hey, this was a way we could come up with $25,000 off of an unsympathetic group of people, and that's the argument for it. And I don't personally think that that's a good way to raise revenue. If you need money for these things, I think we ought to acquire that money through other means, rather than tacking this on top of it. I'm not a supporter of drunk driving. On the other hand, I'm not a big supporter of picking and choosing which groups we're particularly going to tack these things onto, and the idea that this is a deterrent is, it's a fabrication. There's no evidence that, I've tried to find any evidence that this is a deterrent, there is none. Okay? So we should just say that this is what it is, that we decided to do this as a revenue-generating tool, off of an unsympathetic group of people, in a very unfortunate circumstance. And I knew that in bringing this up, I would lose the argument, okay? But I think arguments ought to be had, whether you win them or lose them.
I would just like to point out that in the discussion that was presented, it's only represented as a cost recovery, it's not represented as a deterrent, unless I've missed something.
I believe early on in the background material, we talked about...
When we spoke before.
Right.
You spoke about the hours that it takes to process these.
But in tonight's presentation, it's just talking about cost...
I believe that's just the ordinance, I think the backing material in the last meeting did have some...
Okay, but I know I remembered it, I couldn't find it now, though, so...
And Randy, I totally respect your position on it, and I'm glad that there are people like you willing to speak up about it. But I do think there's a nexus. There's the three, four hours of processing time that Chief Held explained to us at a prior meeting. So there's some rationale for this. And also, to be clear on the record, I'm not against drinking, I'm against drinking and driving.
Any other comments, or questions for the chief? If not, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve an ordinance approving a fee for the empowerment of vehicles used in the commission of DUI-related offenses within the city of Lake Forest. Final reading.
So moved.
Have a second? Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
No.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Six yea, one nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Next item on the agenda, new business, consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of the Mendino duplex development. First reading of desire by the city council, final approval, presented by Catherine Zorniak, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This petition comes to you with unanimous recommendation for approval from the Plan This is a request for approval of a duplex development. The property is located on the east side of McKinley Road, to the north of the northern driveway, driveway exit at Lake Forest College, Lake Forest High School. It's the second property, this is the Winthrop Court property, this is the second property This site is currently developed with one building, with one duplex building, two units. It is also developed with a house and a detached garage. A number of years ago, when the property owner, Mr. Mendino, came forward to the Plan Commission, he owned just the northern property, and the Plan Commission encouraged him to look at acquiring the property to the south, and looking at a unified development on that site. Mr. Mendino does now own the entire site, the existing single-family home and the garage is proposed for demolition as part of this plan. The Plan Commission recognized a few key points. In 2011, they saw this plan, rather than with two additional buildings, three additional buildings were proposed. They recognized that the proposed development would create a single unified development. As I mentioned, there would be the addition of two buildings, or four living units, four duplex units, that the existing building and the two additional buildings would be served with a single driveway, that, that the new units, as well as the existing units, would be rental units, a product type that we continue to hear there is a, a gap in our current available units. And they also recognize that the project is now presented, does not require any variances. Again, the proposed site includes one building that is currently developed. This building was part of a development approved by the Plan Commission, as I mentioned. The existing building was approved by the Building Review Board a number of years ago, and then was constructed. The two new buildings, one to the east, one to the south, would be identical to the existing building, again, would all be served by a single driveway. In an earlier plan, there was a fourth building proposed in this location, which made the site very tight, caused some drainage problems. We did hear a considerable amount of concern from neighbors to the south regarding loss of light. At the direction of the Plan Commission, the petitioner went back, reworked the project, and when it came back to the Plan Commission this time, the commission was very enthusiastic, recommended approval. If you choose to do so tonight, there is a, an ordinance in your packet, I believe it begins on page 69, that ordinance approves a plot of subdivision, which is simply a consolidation of the two existing lots into a single lot. As I said, this would be a single unified development, would remain in the, in a single ownership. And that ordinance also presents findings based on the Plan Commission's discussion that this development is consistent with the planned apartment development provisions in the code. So if you choose to do so, it'd be appropriate to waive first reading of the ordinance and grant final approval. I would mention that Mr. Mendino, the property owner, is in the audience if you have any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Kathy?
I just have a comment. I would just like to commend Mr. Mendino for working with a three-building plan, and working with the city, and it's an expensive way to, to get along with a, with a, with a city and a plan, so thank you for that.
I'd like to hitchhike on that. I was on the Plan Commission when we went, and when we turned back and asked him to, to go from three buildings to two, I wasn't sure whether we'd ever see this in front of us again, so I must commend him. Thank you very much. That's a great plan, and I certainly would be of a mind to waive first reading.
I drove by it the other day, and I was very impressed by the building that's there, that you're going to be, I guess, replicating in the other two models. It just looked terrific. I think this will be a huge addition aesthetically to the area, and I commend it.
Any comments? Any other comments from the public? Mr. Mendino, would you care to come up? Okay, that's good. Stop when you're ahead, right?
I think you got the deal.
Okay, that being said, unless there's any other comments, questions from Kathy, look for a motion to waive first reading for the ordinance approving the Mendino planned apartment development. The plot of subdivision is included, and will be approved as a part of the ordinance. Do I have a motion to waive first reading?
So moved.
Have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, now I'd like a motion to approve final reading of the ordinance approving the Mendino planned apartment development, plot of subdivision, and will be included as part of the ordinance. Do I have a motion for approved final reading?
So moved. Second?
Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Edelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, additional items for council discussion. Bob, nothing for you? Anyone else from the council? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.